Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council Workshop for May 8th, 2023. Kristen Rush.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones. Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Pfeifer.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Protem Jones from tonight's event.
All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones is in excused absence. Thank you. Ms. Gillis, we have one item for our workshop tonight. Okay, Ryan.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Tonight, we're going to talk about the Old Town Revitalization Strategic Plan. And so just to set the history and the backup for this, you guys recall that in 2021, we were presenting in front of you and we were talking about the temporary road closures in Old Town. And we had done that relatively quickly as a response to COVID. And the community liked them a lot. And we talked a little bit about the surveys and those types of things. And you guys said, well, let's move forward with that. But we were moving forward still at a relatively quick pace. And so at that time, we wanted to move forward the plan. We implemented that. We had some community outreach, but we really didn't have a time to sit down with the community, understand what was working, what was not working. And so as part of that process, we'd promised that we would go back and have a much larger community conversation as it relates to what the future of Old Town looks like. In particular, the infrastructure, the street closures, those types of things. But this study doesn't just look at the street closures, even though we'll talk a lot about those tonight. It also talks about festival lighting. It talks about alleys. It talks about events. It talks about access, visitation, all those sorts of things. So tonight, after about a year of community engagement and dialogue, we are near the draft recommendations. And so Ryan with Dig Studios is going to come up and talk about what's the latest that we've heard from the community, where we believe we are with some of the options of moving into the final draft plan. And then with your final direction, we will move forward and finalize the plan before coming back to you for adoption. So Ryan with Dig Studios is going to present where we are right now.
Thank you. Ryan, good to see you again.
Yeah, you as well. Good evening, everyone. So yeah, we want to give an overview of primarily the most recent open house that was in March, that corresponded with another online survey that was open for about a month. And so those results, and they were very targeted to a lot of the specific design elements for Old Wadsworth and Grandview, as well as some of the other public realm within Old Town. And then talk specifically about some of the options for particularly Grandview. But so the open house was at New Image in early March, about two months ago. Really good turnout. I mean, we were having conversations from 15 minutes before it started until half an hour after it technically ended. So hard to know exactly how many people, but definitely at least 100 probably there for that specifically, as well as other folks that were just happened to be at the brewery. So we were really pleased with the turnout. The survey then was open. And so the materials we had at the open house were similar to open houses past, QR code that directed people to this online survey with the same graphics, so they could, and we asked a series of questions. So I'm going to go through kind of the responses to those questions here. We put together two very conceptual design alternatives for Old Wadsworth and Grandview. And then asked, the first question was really which one do people like better overall? Or which ones provide the best overall space and enhancement for Old Town? Option two was much more favored, which was basically, the main difference is that it was a symmetrical design in terms of the cross section. So it's 12-foot patio zone on each side, but an eight-foot zone for planting, for trees and additional planting and seating elements. And then 20-plus feet clear in the center for emergency vehicles. The other option was more linear, more standard to what you might see in a newer streetscape, but a little bit asymmetrical. And one of the downfalls to that one was that the street trees on Old Wadsworth are not in a straight line. They follow the curve that's there of the curb line. So option two enables us to preserve all of the trees that are existing, add additional trees, and creates a little more interest visually because the planting elements are varied from low to the ground, raised up, benches and seating integrated into them. And all of those details haven't been exactly figured out, but that's the general concept. So that was much more popular overall. Then we asked a series of questions, four questions about which option people think provides the best dining, walking, event, and landscape experiences? Excuse me, specifically. And still, option two was the winner for all four of them. So for dining, it does provide bigger cafe zones on either side of the street. The overall, people thought the overall walking experience was better. Although, walking zone is sort of in the center. It's again, very symmetrical and clear for everyone. For landscape, again, this preserves all these existing trees, adds additional trees, particularly on Grandview, and has a lot more space for additional planting, particularly raised planting that will help, you know, not be trampled as much when it's flush. And then for flexibility for events, while they were both very similar, you know, both can accommodate about the same number of tents. The second option, the difference is that there's sort of space between, within this planting zone where tents can be kind of tucked into those spaces. So you're able to have tents on both sides of the street, whereas with option one, it's not wide enough. And so the tents would have to be on one side and then kind of alternate as you went down the block. So then we asked about materials preferences. So for paving, we sort of gave photo examples of the direction. And the second option was much more popular, which is slightly more traditional, warmer color, clay or brick pavers. It might have some accent paving as well, but folks like the more traditional look. For street furnishings, while both are contemporary, far and away, people preferred the options with wood integrated, particularly into the seating versus metal. And then for lighting, overhead lighting specifically, but also some of the pedestrian lighting. Option one for overhead, because we heard early on was, you know, very popular. Folks really wanted some overhead lighting. It was more of a catenary lighting system, like you might see in Europe, with larger, more modern fixtures. Option two, which was much more popular, is a more traditional string sort of twinkle or tivoli lights, as we call them. If you remember the previous open house and survey, we had shown three possible high-level concepts for the square. We got feedback on that and took that and refined this to a more realistic design. And then we just asked if people felt like this really fits well with the overall preferred street designs, but also with Old Town's historic feel and look. And yeah, 80, 78% of folks agreed or strongly agreed with that. So I feel like we got really good direction on that. We then asked about gateways, which are identified in the plan, sort of particularly at Ralston and Old Wadsworth, Old Wadsworth and Grandview, and then some secondary pedestrian gateways at other intersections. But kind of gave three potential options. And this idea of overhead archways rose to the top with 56% of the votes. And these won't be, these specifically will not be taken to a detailed design with this. It'll sort of stay as this is the preferred direction as a concept in the Old Town plan.
Mr. Marriott.
Ryan, let me ask you a question about that real quick. Have you ever had the same question on other surveys where they didn't pick that? Like, it seems to me like you would never get a different answer than that, no matter what the situation that you asked this question with these options would be.
I have not. I'm looking at my colleague. Have you? Okay, with a different outcome? That's what I would say would probably be a slightly more contemporary or modern approach.
I mean, I can understand ultimately the bottom one getting built or whatever, but when you survey residents and you talk about, you know, these types of identification, kind of identifying the area, I have a hard time believing anything besides option two ever gets picked. Or ever, ever isn't the winner in the poll.
I would say that this definitely is in line with the material choices that the community made, right? There is a very strong preference for the more traditional Main Street type of materials that weren't too contemporary. So we weren't surprised to see that this rose to the top as well.
Thank you.
And I just want to make one more comment about it. The only reason I would hesitate with that is people are familiar with it because of Golden, probably. And if we're looking at a sense of place for us, that would be something I wouldn't necessarily. But people are familiar with Golden, so I'm sure people lean that way in this. But I think the bottom one, because if we're going to do Old Town and we do some sort of gateway, we should try to keep it unique to us.
Sure.
Find a different way.
You know, the option three is certainly a more affordable thing to, you know, design and build probably than the overhead arch. But I think there are certainly ways to make an overhead element still unique and unique to Old Town. So. Then we asked towards the end of this about some of the other streets within Old Town. We had identified previously kind of a hierarchy of investment. So A and B are not shown here because that is Old Wadsworth and Grandview. And then there's sort of a Level C and Level D. Level C being that there's a little bit more investment within the sidewalk zone and planting zone. D being sort of your baseline improved sidewalks and corner elements. But we asked people to rank the other blocks in terms of how they would prioritize, you know, in terms of rebuilding these. So for the C blocks, Grant, the other sections of Grandview are at the top. So both east and west ends. And then for D, 57th and Webster came out to the top two. And just because it comes up often, the reason the lower numbers are the higher ranked is because the question was ranked, you know, choose one through five. And so that means more people put it at one, so the number is lower. So that's kind of an overview of the survey questions and where that all landed. And then from there, once that closed in April, we took those, took what we heard, the obvious preference for option two design for the streets, and began to refine that and put together some more detailed illustrations of what that would look like. As a little, some of the other elements in terms of transportation, this just is talking about where vehicle access would be. So one of the pieces of this that we'll want to chat about is, the proposal is to allow one-way traffic on Grandview from Old Wadsworth to Webster on the block that's currently fully pedestrian. There's several reasons for this. One being, you may remember early on, we had a lot of conversations with folks that don't use the hub parking garage due to confusion, difficulty to get in and out of it, particularly if you're coming from the west or the north. Coming through Old Town, you know, if you turn south onto Old Wadsworth, you can't turn left into the garage. So additionally, we heard through the technical committee from fire, police, and other emergency services that they have a desire to have better, quicker access to the RTD Plaza that right now is, you know, some winding through 57th and Webster. Lastly, the bank that's on the corner has the drive-through configuration you're probably familiar with right now, that cars have to sort of come out into Grandview and do a U-turn, come back through. In a full, permanent redesign of that, that's not an ideal situation. So this would allow cars exiting to turn right. And we will come back to some of the specifics of this. So Old Wadsworth, from Grandview to Grant, still primarily pedestrian at all times. Obviously allowed for emergency access with retractable bollards that they would have a key to or some ability to retract down into the ground when they need to. Grandview currently, as proposed, one-way with some additional on-street parking on one side, as well as additional loading zone and drop-off zone at the plaza.
Yeah, I just wanted to double-check on that piece about the drop-off for the RTD for the train. So because currently, I had to do this recently, came down Webster, I believe it is. Because currently that, you can't, as you said, this is all pedestrian between Old Wadsworth and Webster. So in order to drop off, if you're coming from the north through Old Town, you have to come down Webster and then take a left to drop off. And there's, it felt like a safety hazard because where I like parked to drop off, I was worried about cars coming south on Webster and just hitting me where I was when they make that turn into Grandview. So it sounds like there's plans to enhance that drop-off, so it's safer. Is that correct?
Yes, exactly. So the next slide, this diagram starts to illustrate, it might be a little hard to see it, or maybe it's just on this big screen. It might be easier for you, but starts to identify the different, a few different mobility and circulation elements. So the drop-off zone that is currently, we're showing in the same location, the kiss-and-ride, if you will. But if to the west of Webster, there would be additional sort of flexible loading. It could be delivery. It could be additional drop-off zone there as well in front of the RTD Plaza. We also show that then, of course, the alleys are utilized for deliveries and loading, illustrating ADA parking at, you know, the closest spaces to every corner, particularly near Old Wadsworth. So there's a little purple bar that you'll see there. And then the dashed red is sort of how we imagine bike circulation may work because particularly on Old Wadsworth where it's closed, we would recommend that it be a dismount zone for cyclists. But one of the recommendations in the plan is to better connect to the bike lanes to the south, as well as to the north, to Ralston Creek Trail. So potentially utilizing the sort of driveway along the tracks and sending bicycles up Webster Street and then Grant up to the light at Ralston to then continue north. And then I think that's pretty much what's covered on this. The other diagram just illustrates sort of a standard intersection. What might, what it might look like and how you could start to consolidate some of the things like bike parking, some seating, lighting, corner lighting elements, and have things sort of have a more consistent feel at each intersection.
Can I, can you wait, pause for a second on the ADA piece? I'm probably going to sound like a broken record here, but, and maybe this is more of a question for the city team. As I've mentioned before, you know, the pedestrian-only section here makes it, you know, virtually impossible if a person is only able to get out of their car and walk a little short distance to get to a restaurant or a store. And so what I have asked before is about the ability to have some sort of mode of transportation to transport people from where they're parking to that pedestrian-only pathway, whether it's a golf cart or, you know, some sort of vehicle that transports people. So I guess my question is, when can we have that conversation?
Maybe for you. Sure. So we can have that conversation anytime council wants. There's more to that conversation as it relates to the implementation part of this plan. So right now, we're doing design concepts. We're not talking necessarily budgets and numbers right now, what's get built and when. Parts of the conversation are also related to things like loading zones, where those are, where drop-off points are. So we're able to consolidate and make those things as short as distance as possible because we do have breaks at 57th. We have breaks at Grandview on the south. We have the potential to have the Grandview right, or Grandview one-way that'll have a loading zone there. So some of those things may be solved with alternative modes of transportation that are in it, but they also may be solved through not just design elements, but access at how we design that. So I think that when we get to the construction phase of it, it's really going to shine a light on where are the potential problem areas? And then what are the, and what are the solutions to that? So I wouldn't necessarily go to the vehicles as being, it's certainly a solution. And it might be a solution in certain areas and may not be for others. So I think when we get to the construction side of that and we know what's going on and where the problems are. But we are keenly aware of ADA access and making sure that this is accessible to everybody in thoughtful design.
I appreciate that, and I'll just, I'll keep bringing it up.
Of course.
And this is just the slide put into here to illustrate again that hierarchy of sort of the street functionality. So the A blocks, two blocks of Old Wadsworth, mostly always pedestrian only. The caveat is, of course, emergency access is possible. The B blocks, the northern block of Old Wadsworth and the center block of Grandview, sometimes pedestrian only. The idea is that those would, again, Grandview would have this one-way traffic most of the time, but the street could still be closed down for events or, you know, through, decided through some sort of operations plan down the road. Maybe it's closed weekends. Maybe it's just closed for events. Sort of be up to, you know, the community, the Business Improvement District to decide. But the B blocks would importantly would feel the same as the A blocks. So design treatment, special paving in the street, all of the same light fixtures, lighting elements, planting, design, seating, all of that. So it feels like one cohesive space for those four blocks. And then C, sort of a little bit less, you know, the roadway would still be asphalt or concrete. Wouldn't have all the extra paving, but maybe the sidewalk zones are all in the same special paving. Whereas then D, sort of just start to get a little bit of that in more of the amenity zone of the sidewalks.
Ms. Simpson.
Quick question, Ryan. So Section B2, the one on the center section in front of the bank on Grandview, turning that now into a one-way, there's currently a section that's fully closed on both sides. So what is, it's actually a two-part question. What is the proposal there since we have dining along there in terms of like a median or whatnot for car protection for pedestrians? And then I guess we're probably looking at just preserving the crosswalk that's currently there. Is there any additional thoughts for crossing? Because right now, people just jet right across to the train platform.
Sure. So I think that at the intersections, the crosswalks would stay, you know, as-is. The idea with, and we'll go, this is a perfect segue into some renderings that we have of what this would look like. But I'll actually skip to that since you asked about it. So this is a view basically from the corner of Webster looking west. Sort of, you can see the, still be a curb to help with that delineation. But this is, imagine this is a very slow speed street, right? They're driving on rougher pavers, similar to what's on the sidewalk. There's parking on one side. It's as narrow as we're allowed to make it. If you've been to Glenwood Springs, there's a really good example downtown. It's actually curbless, but you can, you can drive on that right next to kind of the outdoor patios in their train station. But people could sort of cross wherever, but there would still be the crosswalks at the crossing. So I don't, I don't know that this would prevent. There would be planters and seating elements along that edge, but there would, there would be, you know, porosity as well, so that people, you know, if they do cross, they can get across. But the ideal design goal here would be, and when this gets to more of a refined level, is that it's designed in such a way that the cars aren't possibly going too fast, right? They're driving very slow. It sort of feels like they're in a space that is primarily for pedestrians. Again, I think we've mentioned to you all Fillmore Street and Cherry Creek North is an example of this where it's open to traffic, but you sort of instinctually slow down because you're driving on, you know, nice pavers and pedestrians can kind of cross wherever.
Thank you.
But we are showing for Grandview, what was sort of, come back to Old Wadsworth, but for Grandview, we are showing sort of two options here. Option A is that it's the one-way traffic proposal. However, option B sort of shows it without that as pedestrian only. The reason for that is there certainly were some comments on the online survey that people would like it to remain closed, as well as the Business Improvement District was very adamant that they would like it to remain closed as well to traffic. But there are these sort of technical, operational concerns that I mentioned earlier. The technical committee for the project generally is in favor of it being open to one-way traffic. So we're sort of showing both options here this evening for discussion or, and future decision on sort of how we move forward with that. So we have renderings with both possibilities. So this is taken from the RTD Plaza, of course, looking northwest. This is without traffic. Of course, there's still a clear zone in the center there, but you do get the addition of, you know, additional planting and seating elements on the south side of the street that you wouldn't with the traffic. The, one other trade-off to that, though, is with, with traffic, we're able to add a third row of street trees. I think this one shows a little better here. So you can see there's that expanded north side, there's enough space to add a third row of trees. So on the north side, you're walking underneath this double row of street trees. Whereas if it's closed, it needs, everything sort of needs to shift so that the south side gets those additional planting features, which still just maintain two rows of street trees. And then this sort of aerial view from Old Wadsworth and Grandview, this is with allowing one-way traffic. You can see a car pulling out of the bank drive-through there. With it being fully pedestrian, we looked at several different options for how this might need to be configured. And the most sort of logical is that that first, however many feet that is from the intersection to the back wall of the bank would need to allow one-way traffic heading west so that the cars can pull out of the drive-through, turn left, come out to the light, and then they can continue on. They'd still be sort of driving in this space that feels like the pedestrians, pedestrian mall, if you will, but the full sort of barricades or bollards would be sort of set back. And you can kind of see them just above that orange car there in the rendering. So this is kind of a sense of what that would feel like. We felt like that's a better alternative than kind of how it's set up currently, where they come out and do a U-turn. That's potentially more confusing for people, more difficult to maneuver, awkward for pedestrians in the space, things like that. So this, you know, a con here is that this could still potentially be a little confusing. It would require a certain amount of signage and the right amount of bollards or barricades, right, to sort of steer the traffic. And then real quick, I just want to go back to Old Wadsworth since we didn't, but these are just some views. There wasn't, this is just sort of the preferred design, looking north towards the square. An evening view looking south from 57th. Aerial view, including the square with sort of a larger new splash pad, skating rink, water feature kind of closer to the street, and then a performance lawn more in the center with a pavilion and things sort of on the east side. And then this is just illustrating the dimensions that this would be. And this would apply to Grandview as well if it was fully pedestrian, same sort of dimensions. The streets are the same width, so. And we actually, I actually have sections for those that I forgot to get to. So with Grandview open to one-way, this is kind of what that would look like. About a 10-foot sidewalk on the south side. The south side would not have space for outdoor dining. 20 feet clear for emergency access. And then on the north side, 10 feet of additional planting, that additional row of trees. Then an eight-foot clear walking path. And then an expanded 12-foot café zone, which is much larger than what's currently, what would currently be there if the street was not closed. And then this is, if it is closed to cars, would be the same as Old Wadsworth. And then this is, if it is closed to cars, would be the same as Old Wadsworth. So that's kind of where that is, that stands at the moment. I can pause there if anyone has.
Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, so I, I guess I wanted to talk about that, about the, seems like that's a key component is one-way traffic on Grandview or not, or if so, how. And a couple of the things that I see as we look through these slides is whether it's the existing occupants of those buildings on the side or future occupants, including the bank building, I think building and design or operating a design that precludes outdoor dining from that side of the street, I don't think is a wise move. I think especially the existing tenants, you know, have, are taking advantage of that now, the existing businesses there, and I would see absolutely no reason to, to, for them to lose that in any way, shape, or form. And, you know, over time, my hope would be that whatever's constructed here would be here for a really long time, 40 or 50 years, and going to outlive most likely any of the businesses that are there, and so there'll be other businesses there in the future. And I think for an area like Old Town, Nevada, that ability to have outdoor customer interaction, outdoor dining, outdoor whatever, whatever businesses end up there, I think is a real key component, and I don't see how we can make a decision to benefit the people on one side of the street at the expense of people on the other side of the street. So it would lead me to strongly say, you know, we need to build this design, and then in the times when, you know, so it'd normally be this configuration, in the times when it's appropriate to have somebody drive there, have some accommodation for that. So whether it's a, you know, early in the morning, in the night, or whatever, for deliveries or services, you know, that kind of thing, or, you know, winter time, whatever the issue might be, emergency vehicle access, that that be built in rather than a normal condition of one-way traffic is the normal condition that then can be closed off to have an event or closed off because it's a special occasion. To me, that seems like far less desirable because of the other pieces of this. So I don't know how everybody else feels, but I strongly feel that, and, and all of the feedback that I've gotten, is, is that people really treasure the closed-off street, that, that, that that really is a key component, and even though it causes some difficulties with some of the operational aspects of it, I think there would be quite a bit of pushback, and I think your, your survey even showed that, that there'd be quite a bit of pushback if we were to go to any kind of a design that tended to favor that so that that would be the normal condition. So I don't think it's so much can there ever be cars on the street or not, but what's, what's the surface like? And so I think if it's got curbs and it's got parking spaces and it's got normally those automobile activities happening, I think that to me feels like that has these disadvantages for the businesses on the south side, it feels like it has, it would have quite a bit of pushback from the citizens who work in or patronize or own properties in Old Town. And a design more like this, even if it had some accommodation for limited traffic at certain times, might be a way better approach, and I'd like to know what you think of that.
Sure, I, certainly a great point, that yes, it does, allowing traffic on a regular basis would, because of sort of the alignment and the traffic flow on Grandview would favor the north side, right, if you take out westbound traffic, you could expand the north side of the street. So I certainly see that, it's, yeah, I think we're sort of exploring both sides of, operationally there's concerns with it being closed that it could be alleviated, but certainly from a public space, public realm perspective, there's a great benefit to having it be more symmetrical on both sides of the street. You could allow vehicle traffic in a curbless environment as well, if as needed, certainly. That's sort of part of that operations plan down the road, once this is fully designed, that it could, you know, could allow it in the mornings like you said, or something like that. And it could still be a design like this that's, that is a curbless situation.
Right.
There would just need to be some amount of engineering involved at the intersection with Old Wadsworth, so you sort of, if people are coming directly across, the traffic engineering will have some opinions about how you navigate that to sort of account for that shift on the south side, does that make sense?
Hmm, yep.
Okay, Mr. Pfeifer?
When you say the shift, I might have missed something here, when you say the shift is if the one-way and we didn't have parking?
Right, so the...
On the south side?
Right, so if you, if, sort of what's shown on the screen is, it doesn't precisely line up with the travel lanes on the west side of Old Wadsworth. So there would just need to be some, again, this would be for the traffic engineering to determine exactly kind of how you get through there if it is open to traffic. Whereas in the option that is open to traffic, it's perfectly aligned with the eastbound travel lane.
So can we go to option A?
Sure.
So, so I think both options are good, I'll, I'll tell you, let me just back up. When I first got counsel, everyone told me, hell no, you're not closing Old Wadsworth or anything, so I'm glad that we're even having this long-term conversation because I've, I've always wanted a pedestrian-friendly community down there. And so whatever solution we do, I'm excited about, so we'll start there. But this one, I, the reason I lean towards this one, and I understand what Mr. Marriott's going to, but it seems to me it flows better, but what it doesn't, what I was hoping is maybe to solve some of the issue that Mr. Marriott's bringing up is don't have parking on that south side, and just keep it as just a pass-through lane that solves everything. And, and here's why, if you go back to your slide that has the intersection where the first bank is, one more. So this to me flows, and what it, what it does is if you did not have a curb there, it's, it's set up for us to maybe close it off one day without a heavy lift, but we still try to test out this one-way thing for a little bit, and if it doesn't work, then we can close it down, and, and it's not a big lift. When you start putting billiards in and everything else, and I agree with you from a traffic flow, I think it causes confusion, and I think people from the intersection will try to go in that way and, and realize you, you're not supposed to be in there, and then they get stuck, and there's pedestrians walking around, and they got to reverse, and you just turn into a mess. I, I think we also need to recognize that the bank is also a business and has a need, and if there's a way that we could do a hybrid of the two, I would alleviate the parking on the south side in front of those businesses and just, you know, make the lane tighter to give the seating that they need in front of those, was it three businesses, two businesses? It's not that much.
Right.
So just narrow the road, maybe even make that a hump so it slows traffic over, maybe even a little bit, I don't know, but some way to find a hybrid approach.
Sure.
I just think it looks better, it flows better, and it preps us to be able to close the whole thing down if we want to. That's just my opinion. I just think it looks friendlier when you put billiards up, it just looks like we're caging off sections of our community, we want this to be an open, safe pedestrian mall, so that's my thought. But I can go either way, I'd be excited for either one, so, but I'd lean more towards the option A.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, I actually agree with Mr. Marriott, I lean more towards the pedestrian mall with access when necessary for emergency vehicles or others. The reason why is mostly, the pedestrian mall doesn't feel like it's one street going one way, it's, it's a larger section and people really get that important vibe because it's a, quite a long block that it stretches all the way down. The, for three years now, we've had cars for the bank doing that odd, I, I agree, it's an extremely odd little U-turn that they have to do, but they, they've figured it out, the people have figured it out. So I'm not terribly concerned that it is an, an over hindrance on the bank, and I know it certainly is a huge benefit to the two businesses on, on the same side of the street as the bank, to Lloyd's Sandwiches and to 12 Volt, 12 Volt has actually built quite a beautiful patio, and so it would be a loss for them, I think, to lose that. So my sense is I prefer to keep the pedestrian mall, I don't hate the one-way, but I would prefer to keep the pedestrian mall. And then my only other feedback here is, and I cannot believe I'm saying these words, I believe there are too many trees in these renderings. One of the things I love about Old Town is how open it is. I love being able to stand at the closure and kind of look down, and I can see the historic district, I can see the building fronts, I can see the people, we have umbrellas for shade, we have some trees which are extremely important, I'm not, I'm not saying wipe out all the trees, I just think there's maybe too many. We, we have a historic district that already has an aesthetic to it, and people love that aesthetic. We don't want to change that mix too much, we want to improve it rather than try to turn it into something different. Old Town is not a tree-heavy part of town, historically, there were no trees at all there. So while I do like the trees, I would actually say fewer to keep that openness, that connectivity. And then I, I know these are just renderings, but don't forget the murals along Grandview Avenue, and one more reason why I support that being pedestrian, that mural has become very tied to the aesthetic of Old Town. And even if we go in and change the pavers, my hope would be with that we could bring the artist back to recreate it in the same spot, because it's become very iconic. It's literally appeared in art show, art showings and photography around the world, I've seen that happening. It would be a tremendous loss to lose that, so my thought is we keep that as well.
Sure, thanks.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, I think there, we need more trees, just if you look around, wait, wait a second. A combination of like fewer, not, not all. Because when we have our festivals, we have our events, you see people looking for that shade, you see tables that are on fire because it's just so hot, so I, I think it would be a more welcoming environment, a more comfortable environment when you have slightly more trees. There's this image that sticks in my head to Councilor Fife's point about the one-way, was at Scrumptious, the corner where there's the ice cream, there was a family that was sitting outside, this was before we closed the streets, and a diesel truck came and just like floored it by them, and it was just like poof of, like, of smoke coming from their muffler, and these people clearly were annoyed by it, and it just sort of makes me think of, if we start that one-way street again, that's some of the experiences that they're going to get, that people have been talking about how they appreciate that there's this environment, that there's not those vehicles kind of going by, and that, that's always what sticks in my head when I think about bringing new vehicles into the one-way area that you described, so I would be supportive of the pedestrian only as well. But to that point, I'm wondering, do you know what the breakdown, was there a question in there about would you prefer to keep it pedestrian only versus not, and what that breakdown was?
There wasn't a question towards that. In the previous survey in the fall of last year, there was a question that asked what, which blocks would you prefer for this pedestrian priority zone that was kind of, you know, was it just the, the block by the square, was it all four, or was it, I think, maybe just the two? And it was all four, however, you know, this is still, the four blocks are still the, what we've called the pedestrian priority zone. That wasn't really getting to traffic flow, it was more about overall look and feel and aesthetic. The north block of, of Old Wadsworth, we looked at, could that be fully pedestrianized as well, and that one also had a lot of operational challenges, maybe more than Grandview, but ultimately, you know, the two sort of have some tricky configurations, obviously Grandview's currently closed, so it, it is working, this, from some perspectives would add some benefits to it, but we, the team sort of looked at both and, you know, for that north block, ultimately decided, design language is the same, aesthetics the same, but continue to maintain those traffic operations up there. But no, so the survey did not ask specifically cars or no cars.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Marriott, your second bite at the apple.
Thank you, I had done the first one, just to talk about the one-way on, on Old Wadsworth, but I had a couple of other questions about other things in general about the area. And the first one I had was when we talk about the Old Town Square, is there any kind of design strategies or, or design language or anything that can design for making it less attractive for camp, camping, you know, nefarious activities, that kind of thing? What, what's, what are the strategies that can be done to make that a, a better, more inviting place for, for, you know, people who are there, but not turn it into something that's a negative?
Yeah, that's, that's a tough one, that's, you know, tough for public spaces all over the country. There, you know, the, the biggest thing that can be done is get more people there on a regular daily basis throughout the day, throughout the evening. This concept design is much more open and sort of predictable, we think, than, and it, it sort of accounts for some of the few barriers that are there now. Makes it more open, also allows for circulation more smoothly kind of all the way around the perimeter. It, it's a tough one to totally solve beyond, you know, maximizing views and programming in such a way that you can get more people there on a daily basis to kind of make it less comfortable for folks to loiter for too long, or do things that maybe aren't desirable to be done. Yeah.
Right, okay.
If anyone had anything to add to that?
No, it's fair, fair enough. No, that's a tough, tough problem. Let me ask another question, as we look at all these different design and design elements for all of these areas around Old Town, is there any kind of guiding language about when is, when it, when is it enough and when is it too much? And, and let me give you my example or my view, which I will differ from Ms. Simpson, the, the, as we've closed these streets and now in the second iteration, you know, we've kind of seemingly to me, taken an all-of-the-above approach, you know, we've had certainly some limitations with the second iteration where we've tried to have some consistency with the parklets and the furniture and things like that, but it seems like down there, it's a kind of an everything, murals on the streets and artwork on the boxes and crayons on the floppy posts and the, you know, and it's like, it's, it's everything. And to my eye, it seems kind of at times way over busy, like kind of, kind of too much. And, you know, the, whether it's the street murals or whether it's the other things or, or whatever it is, where do, where would a community find guidance about, you know, are there best practices, is there, what's the guidance for how do you know when you've gone too far, or how do you know how to stop before you go too far?
Yeah, that's tough too, it's somewhat subjective, I think. You know, this design would be completely, a full reconstruction, right, it would be special paving, so street murals would not be ideal on expensive pavers in the street. It would certainly introduce consistency in terms of light fixtures, light pole, poles to support the overhead lighting, there would all be similar, similar street furnishings, and also, you know, railings for outdoor cafes so that that's consistent throughout, that's kind of the vision at this level. There could be more detail explored through, you know, a full design process for this, there could be certainly some amount of regulations maybe put into, you know, made recommendations through the design process that the community or the business improvement district could implement. I, I think personally that overhaul of this magnitude would, would sort of reduce some of the busyness that you referred to.
Okay, sounds good, and then?
Can I add on?
Sure.
Sorry, I just wanted to add on because I recognize the question, I also recognize where we are sort of on the lifecycle of exactly what you're talking about. So there are some things that we're putting in place now as we mature and get a little bit more sophisticated. We, you know, when we started this, we were temper everything and just get outside, and there are heaters on the sidewalks and all this other stuff, we reined it back a little bit, we've got a little bit more consistency, we need to be looking for the long term, we need to understand our loading, our unloading, this, that, and the other thing. But one of the things that has popped up, if you will, as a result of this, is some of our placemaking efforts. And so one of the things that we are trying to do is we're trying to be a little bit more consistent with what is our placemaking effort, and how can we be consistent with the overall look and feel? So for an example, we are working with the bid, we're working with Public Works, and we're working with vibrant communities and neighborhoods to kind of have an overall art management program in Old Town, so that when we go to have murals or boxes be painted or whatever, is there a theme, is it, is there, are, are there artists that can be featured on a website to talk about, you know, why is this art here in the first place? How long should it be there? Are there specific places in the right of way that it should go? Because what we don't want to do, while there is a, a place for public art and all those things are good, we don't want to just say like, well, there's something there today, and then there's something there over there the next day, and it just gets filled up, and that nobody's really approving it, there's no insurance on it, there's no really systematic way. So we are trying to make that process specifically around art. And then when we come in with the designs or whatnot, there's going to be specific And then when we come in with the designs or whatnot, there's going to be specific areas that our Public Works can look at from an operation and maintenance of saying like, this is how we can snowplow around it. This is how we can do whatever it is that we need to do. So there's five areas that can get public art, and this is the size it can. And then we'll do a call for artists, and then we can involve our Arts and Culture Commission to be the judges so that it's not individuals or, or whatnot, that there's a community mind. And then the other question I'll say, or answer, I'll give a little bit sarcastically relative to how do you know when too much is too much? I think when people start coming here on the dais and complaining to City Council, like, what are you doing to our Old Town? That's when we'll certainly know. We cross that line.
We'd hope we stop before we get there.
We, we absolutely do. And so we're trying to set up that process. But if we don't do a good enough job there, I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Right, right. Okay, sounds good. I have just one last question. And you might want to go back a couple of slides to something that shows kind of a map of, of Old Town. And you, you didn't hear this from me, but it seems like it would be really nice if there was a way to exit, this is a good one here, exit the parking garage on the west side of the parking garage and go south on Old Wadsworth. Now, you can do that today, and I may or may not have done that a time or two when there was no traffic coming. But it seems like with a median shape, that could be done to where, I, I understand why you can't turn left into the west side of the parking garage from Old Wadsworth because you could potentially stick somebody on the train tracks. And so you can't allow that. But it seems to me that there would be a, a median-shaped way that would both allow that and allow that southern exit from the, from the west side of the parking garage to just improve the flow. And then particularly if with that, with a proposed roundabout down at the next intersection, you know, it seems like that would free that up and solve some of the same issues that having one-way traffic on Grandview would be. And I wonder if at some point along the way, as we look at this, if we can just look at that with a creative eye about, you know, how, how is that doable? And if so, how, how is that doable? Because I think it's totally doable because you, you can totally do it. But, but is there a way to make it legal?
Voice of experience.
Make it le, make it legal to do, which seems like that ought to be doable as well.
Certainly. I can't answer it from a traffic engineering perspective, but it's, yeah, you're right. It's, it's doable. One thing I did forget to mention on that note is we are looking at including in the plan a recommendation to, with RTD's permission, to sort of reconfigure the intersection and entrance on the other side, on the east side, so that to figure out a way to allow vehicle traffic to enter directly from 56th and not have to turn and circumvent, navigate through the movie theater parking lot, but still accommodate buses exiting at that intersection. So we're kind of working through with a couple of options that we'll see how much heartburn RTD has about that. But so hopefully that helps as well and makes a more clear entrance. It does, of course, take you to the lower level of the parking garage, but there's also lots of discussion about maybe some enhanced signage and things within the garage that might also just help overall people's navigational experience.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Fifer?
That's good because I've always had a complaint about that because I thought it was so weird to go to the movie theater around. So hopefully we can fix that. The other one is, while we're on the topic, is the west side that Marriott's talking about. I wish it was wider. It's so narrow to get in and out. You have ingress, egress. And then pedestrians walk across it when they're not supposed to, but it just becomes a mess at that. I think that's why we don't get people wanting to use it. It's just difficult to get into. What I want to talk about is the next slide. I think it's the next one over. One more. One more. One more. Maybe not one more. One more? Okay. I'm looking for where you talk about Grant Place going north to Ralston Road on Old Wadsworth.
Sorry, say that again.
Grant Place and Old Wadsworth. There's a map that shows that you, there was an option to close it completely down for pedestrian?
Oh, well, we explo, so that would...
It caught my eye. Okay, so it was back, not forward?
Yeah, it was.
This kind of says it, but keep going. Keep going. Keep going. There was, there was one that you showed the different options with a streetscape. Where's, where are the options? So maybe is it previous to this?
So these, the very beginning.
Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Oh, okay. You can start seeing it on the map on the right of these options. So in your proposal, are you looking at closing it all the way from Ralston Road all the way down?
No, no, no. So this, this shows the, here's, I'll, this one probably shows it more clearly. So the areas in the lighter pink are where vehicle access is, and then the darker pink is pedestrian. The idea is that all four blocks are considered this pedestrian priority zone, have the same level of finishes and enhancements, right? So special paving, lighting, planting, street furnishings are all consistent on all of these blocks, whether or not they permit vehicle traffic. We did have discussions about that north block, but ultimately, just from an operations standpoint, it was far too difficult. You would have to have some sort of vehicle turnaround or dead-end cul-de-sac something at Grant Place. There are the businesses that rely on vehicle access, the bakery and Steve's Meats. They're at the north end of that block before Grant that also is sort of being accommodated as-is through this. So really, the fully pedestrian closed zone starts just south there at Rhine Lenders Building. And with the traffic signal and the amount of traffic volume, it just was too, too difficult to close that fully. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Do we think, consider maybe one-way or anything out of there as well, or some improvement up there?
The one thing we, we were looking at was the angled parking that's on that block, changing that to parallel so that you can maximize the sidewalk zone and allow for more outdoor dining and things of that nature just because the angled parking takes up a lot of space. But...
Okay.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to share a couple of things because we, we have the, the drawings here and the renderings, but we're so familiar with what's there now that it's a little bit hard to picture how operationally it will be. So one of the things I wanted to say is that the medians that are there now, those would be removed. And we would put bollards in their place. However, they would be different bollards than the yellow bollards that are like Grandview and Old Wadsworth down at the south. They would be bollards that could go down into the ground. They're manual because we don't want to deal with electricity and hydraulics and those types of things. And we've talked to Public Safety about this, and they're okay with the, the manual nature of it. But we could put those manual bollards at Ralston and Old Wadsworth. So if we had a festival for the weekend, we could pull them up and we could make that area closed. So the, the idea in actually in all of these areas is that we have the ability to open and close them even, even in the fully pedestrianized areas. We would have the bollards that can come up and down. So that's what's allowing the emergency access without having to go over a median. The idea is, is that the curb, or it, or when we say curbless, we're actually thinking about pavers that go from building to building as one flat service. And so from an ADA perspective, that's an enormous kind of leap forward. And then there'd be like a table at 57th so that if you're coming on 57th and then you're going in between the areas that are like the square on the north and then schoolhouse or whatever, you go on the table and then come back down. And that would be pavers. And that was actually another thing that we've been talking about because people are nervous about how they cross 57th and doing some sort of design there that made it feel more pedestrian like you see in Boulder or those types of things. And, and by doing that table there, it will naturally slow people down and allow a safer access even though it's still open to traffic. So some of it is just, I don't want to say forgetting what's there now, but, but, but thinking about this is we're, we're talking about flexible streets that operationally, you know, maybe, just not even suggesting this, but just saying it, maybe all the streets are open until 10 o'clock in the morning so that we can get deliveries and trash services and those types of things. And then we lift everything up in order to make it pedestrian. But in the early morning hours, we don't need it necessarily to be as pedestrian as we want it to be for lunch and dinner and on the weekends and those types of things. So we are dealing with operational challenges, you know, with, with all the services that businesses need. And so this design is really intended to make it look great, but also offer the flexibility we need so that we minimize the impacts to businesses, pedestrians, access, all those things.
Yeah. Thanks for mentioning that point about the bollards.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So I actually wanted to second Mr. Marriott's with the in-and-outs of the parking garage. Would love to be able to turn south when going west out of the garage as well as just going through the movie theater parking lot is exceptionally awkward, and it's going to become increasingly difficult once all the construction of that area is finished. So just improving those entrances and exits are extremely important. And I also highly agree about increased signage. People somehow don't even know that there's a parking garage there. It's shocking how often I hear that. I can't find parking in Old Town. Have you tried the 300-car garage? There's a garage? It's shocking how often I have that conversation. So increased, you know, parking this way, I think that would be extraordinarily valuable for our residents. And I know we are light-years off from design elements, but I can't help but think that the, we already have a giant sign for Old Town, and that's the water tower with the creams and the blues and whatnot. So just drawing color inspiration for that and maybe identifying sort of an Old Town brand when it comes to signages could be a really great way to differentiate, differentiate it from other places that are historical districts and create that identity that's just Old Town.
Certainly. Thank you. And that is a recommendation that will be in this final plan. It's the, you know, to do a signage and wayfinding sort of study for this, to determine some of those things.
I'm just going to echo something Mr. Fifer said at the beginning that, you know, there was a time when the concept of closing down either one of these streets to traffic was unheard of. You could never even think about doing it. That's the one bright spot from the pandemic is it made us all think outside the box, and we certainly made lemonade out of those, those lemons. So, you know, I could live with either way. I, I prefer the full closure. And frankly, I think perhaps AIDA needs to be having some conversations with the bank that, and, and frankly, my law firm represented that bank for decades. And, you know, we've since retired, and that business relationship's long been, been gone. But I don't know that that bank's always going to be there. And I, I worry too that we put too much time and effort into existing uses and have to recognize that those uses may change over time. So... So I think, you know, I mean, banking has certainly changed. And, and how people use their banks has definitely changed. So I prefer the, my preference would be the full closure of, of the Grandview section. I like what, what Ms. Smith said in terms of just the enjoy, enjoyment factor of having that fully closed, particularly at, at Scrumptious and places like that. And, and I certainly am sympathetic to the, to the restaurant and bar on the, on the south side of the street. I'd hate to lose what they've now been able to develop. Just make sure it has Festoon lights. That's all I ask. Mr. Fifer?
One last thing, and it could be a big ask, but we dream big, right?
And we deliver.
So that's a good thing. I, I, one of the beefs we've always had, and I have, I'm channeling Lorraine Anderson right now, is shoveling the sidewalks. Is there any way that in this element, I know this is a price element, but we should consider some heating elements for the road? I hate to say it, but we do it, we do it, we do it at CDOT. We do it on the, on the public spots where icing happens. And, and we're talking about actually heating Floyd Hill, the interstate. So there is technology now that's cheaper, that can heat, that doesn't cost a lot. It gets, it's a little bit to put in, but to operate, it's nothing. But from a safety perspective, it would, it would alleviate the snowplow and the everyone shoveling and all that other stuff. But just a thought. I know it's dream big.
My wife was suggesting that we just do like Fremont Street in Las Vegas and just cover the whole thing. What do you think?
Zip lines.
I should, I don't think that's quite in keeping with the historic flavor of Old Town.
From the first bank sign all the way down Grandview to Fuzzy's. Okay. Do you have much more?
No, that's, that we've, we've... The last slide was just the next steps for the remainder of the project. Just so you all are aware is kind of here we are. We have one final TAC meeting next week. And then our, our goal is to wrap up the full draft plan by early June, 30-day public comment period. While that's happening, we'll work on the design package for this with the sort of preferred design taking it to a little bit more documented level. That's where we are.
Very good.
Yeah, it's exciting. It's absolutely exciting. And I think the public outreach has been excellent, certainly. You know, I saw your presentation at the Urban Renewal Authority. I know that Mr. Marriott saw it at the bid, and I, and I think it's been, you know, great opportunities. I'm, I'm beginning to think that we ought to have our public meetings at a local brewery instead, too. I think we might get better citizen participation. So let's, let's look into that. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Gillis, anything else you need from us tonight? Very good. We stand adjourned.